It wasn't heavy rail. We probably didn't have trains.
Well, it probably wasn't having problems.
Yeah, there's a correlation there, I think. They just send those to everybody to guess.
Train, like a caboose or a car or a train?
Oh, just like a child to ride around.
It's the three slope versus pickleball court and it's a train. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. This is the work session of city council for May 202024. The very first item is review of the minutes from April 2024. So if you have any comments now, you can let us know or you can bring it up for the next meeting. I'm going to go a little bit out of order because we have some people here that are have a long drive home. So I wanted to go to discussion items ordered 20 ordinance 2021-32. Number of bedrooms on septic. That was the discussion item. And at the end of your packet is the ordinance that was passed in 2021. Having do with septic, as I recall, we went many months that year before we got to that. And the point of discussion on this is that basically what the ordinance we passed does, it does a couple of things. It gives the building official who's Fred Huddleston, who came to the meeting today. If someone has a home that has more bedrooms than the septic allows, he can provide to have that placed on the on the deed. And the second thing it does is that there's a sticker that goes on the electrical panel that says how many bedrooms the home septic is. So those are the two enforcement mechanisms we have, and Fred has been having some problems with that. Basically, the kind of thing that's happening is people will have a two-bedroom house, and then they'll have an office, and then they'll have a two-bedroom septic. And then the realtor will advertise it as a three-bedroom house and sell it. And Fred was, I has tried some different things to try to enforce that. Was a little frustrated, wanted me to bring it up to council, whether you want to leave things as they are or make some kind of change. And the question is what kind of change you might want to make.
Before we kind, can Fred take us through how all this unfolded?
Yeah, he's he's here, so he can say a few words for you.
Let me ask a question, and maybe he can answer that when he's presented. I've been told with contractors that the city is telling them they can't have an extra room. The city is not telling anyone that, are they? Are they telling people they can't have an extra room like they've got a two-bedroom house and an office? The city has told them on the plans on new construction, they can't have that extra room.
Well, Fred had a proposal to enact that last week, and it created quite a firestorm. And it's probably what you heard about it, and we did retract that. And he asked me to bring the issue up at council because there may be some other way to do it. What he was doing, I'm going to have him talk to the mayor, what he was doing is if you had an office, it can't have a wall there or a door. So it has to be open on one side. That way you can tell it's an office, not a bedroom. Of course, some people have plans. You know, the problem is you're trying to stop some people who are basically cheating. And and sometimes you catch innocent people that really aren't doing anything wrong in the net. So that is the essence of the issue. Fred, do you want to elaborate?
Thank you for the opportunity. I do appreciate you giving me this opportunity to share these concerns because for me, they're not much different than any other building code concerns. They're really, the crux of the issue is health and safety. It's not so much that people are being cheated, although that is a problem. It's not so much that real estate professionals are not on an even playing field with one another, although that is a problem as well. But the real issue is when septic systems are overloaded, and they're already small systems because of the size of lots that we have, what people wind up doing when that backs up into their house, which they do not like, is they will go and open up the cleanout outside, and it will flow out onto the grass and down into the hiking trails and the lakes and whatever else is nearby. So this is a health and safety item that is just as critical to me as any other health and safety item in the code. And I have been, I've tried maybe three or four different times to, when I become aware of a violation, to initiate a code enforcement case and have that prosecuted as you would a criminal violation because it's not a civil violation, it's a criminal violation. So that would be by citation. And I've been informed by a number of people, including my supervisor, council, that the current state of the ordinance doesn't really support that. But my argument is I don't believe it's necessary anyway. I don't, I don't think the ordinance itself is necessary for me to enforce the code. I already have that authority. It's given elsewhere. But the ordinance does give us more specificity about it. There's a three-tier punitive system in section four. The first violation is $750, the second one is $1,250, the third is $2,500. So it kind of implies that there is a possibility of violations. So also in section one of the ordinance, if you have it handy. When I reviewed the ordinance, I think it was back in September, I don't know. It was, I believe, in 2021. I looked at section one and I saw and I saw that the text that says, "The determination of conformance shall be made by the building official pursuant to his or her authority contained in the Arkansas Fire Protection Code and locally adopted." So that's pretty standard, and it goes along with how I enforce everything else. And then, of course, the only other, going to section four, it gives us that tiered system I mentioned a moment ago. Section two gives us the optional deed restriction for additional rooms. So this is America. We do want to allow personal freedom. If someone wants to have an office in their home, they should be allowed to do that. However, we need to protect the public. So this idea of a deed restriction became part of the approved construction documents. When we have them record a deed restriction with the county and provide it to us, we scan it into iWork system, which is where we store the records for permits. And it becomes part of the permit documents that we refer to during inspections, and we also have for posterity, future reference. So that's important to remember because completely apart from the the ordinance itself, if we look at the IRC from the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, section 113.4 says the following. "Any person who violates a provision of this code or fails to comply with any of the requirements thereof, who erects, constructs, alters, or repairs a building or structure in violation of the approved construction documents or directive of the building official or of a permit or certificate issued under the provisions of this code," all of these apply in this case, "shall be subject to penalties as prescribed by law." And those in every other situation, when there is no active permit, is by a notice of violation followed by a citation if they do not comply with the requirements of correcting the violation. So my problem with the ordinance is it seems to be a stopping point. Whenever I whenever I put in a request for a violation to be enforced, I met with, we can't do that because there's nothing in the ordinance that allows us to issue a citation. I find that striking that we can't enforce it. Because if we have, if we have a regulation, it's meaningless without enforcement. It doesn't do any good. People will realize very quickly that it's not being enforced, and they will violate it wantonly. And most, I have to be, you know, fair. Most of the real estate professionals are very good about adhering to it. But there are a handful that are not, and they do it fairly prolifically. I have a stack of houses that were listed in excess of the rooms in just the past few months that was sent to me by a real estate professional locally. This is just in the past couple of months. I believe there's about nine or 10, and that's just from that one person that they just happened to notice. That's not exhaustive. I'm sure there's quite a few more. So what I would request and and hope that we could do is go back and take another look at the ordinance and see what we can do, what kind of language we can put in there so that we can issue a citation now, of course, to the to the property owner. The property owner is the person who should be, in my opinion, listed as the defendant. Because it's not necessarily the applicant, like it says in the ordinance now. That applicant may have sold the property. It might have been sold again. And again, it might be 30 years later. He might not even be alive. That applicant is not the violator, as it says. The applicant must appear in court for a violation. That should be reworded, I believe. The violator, the defendant, however you want to say it, that person could, it would actually most likely be someone subsequent to when the initial deed restriction was initiated. That could happen anytime. That could be anytime in the future. So we need to make the ordinance reflect that that possibility. But what I would also like to try to do, and I don't know if this is doable. This is, I think Mr. Kelly could probably help us with this. I do believe that there is some culpability on the part of a broker or a listing agent who lists the property knowingly in violation of the deed restriction. I believe it demonstrates intent to commit criminal violation. There's, there's both, you know, there's different types. I'm not a lawyer, but I do understand that intent is is necessary to have a conviction in this regard. But I do believe that when you state on the listing that there's a deed restriction for two bedrooms, and then write on the same listing where you basically acknowledge that you know, you have knowledge of it, you list it as a three or a four bedroom. To me, that's, that's not only demonstrating an intent, but that's pretty much a confession. They knew exactly what they were doing, and they're doing it anyway in violation of the law. I think if there's some wording we can get that would address that situation, that would be beneficial, and we would be able to protect the public much better. Right now, I can't do, and by the way, the reason I had to take such a heavy hand and in changing my policy last week regarding this was there was no enforcement. I could not get a citation issued for any reason on this. And so it's, you know, it's mentioned in the code that not only am I authorized to enforce the code, I'm directed to enforce the code, and I may not waive the provisions of the code or any other law. And we have laws already on the books that limit the number of bedrooms that you can have in a home to that, that the septic system can support. So this is not a new thing. This is just enforcing the existing laws. If someone gives me a room, let me just back up a little bit and give you, paint a picture for you. What used to happen was people would come in with a six-bedroom house, and they would have a two-bedroom septic system. We would say, no, you've got way too many bedrooms. And they would cross it out right in front of us and write in office or write in workout room or library. So now you've got two bedrooms in a library, an office, workout room, and a TV room. They all look exactly like bedrooms. And it really doesn't matter whether or not it has a closet because some bedrooms have closets and some don't. Some offices have closets and some don't. You can have a storage area in a closet that doesn't really define it. What defines a bedroom, in my opinion, is intent and use. If you intend to use a room to sleep in or use it as a bedroom, then it's a bedroom. Any room that is intended for sleeping purposes is the is the definition I put out to the public on this. It doesn't matter if you said it has to do with the safety features. Someone just pull off the smoke detector off the ceiling, and now it's not a bedroom. That's not a very effective method, I don't think. What it does is make it less safe. So it's been a little bit frustrating for me because I do have a passion for protecting people. I take my job seriously. I I do not desire to sign off on anything where I know a violation is is either going to happen or very likely to happen, or I can see that it is happening. I see a pattern of it. It's pointed out to me, and that's not acceptable. I need to have some method of enforcement. So I'm asking for your help on this. Does anyone have any questions?
Fred, is your problem with the the real estate, the listing agent, or with the contractor? Where's the, where's the problem?
Both the listing agent and the contractor agents for the owner. So ultimately, it's the owner that bears responsibility.
Well, I mean, if a contractor builds a two-bedroom house with a, to build a two-bedroom house, he's got to have a permit from the health department for a two-bedroom house with septic system. Is that right?
That's correct.
So if he builds a house that's a two-bedroom, and it's got an office, a den, or whatever's a reasonable number of rooms with a two-bedroom house, and it's a two, it's a two-bedroom septic system, then the listing agent listed as a three-bedroom or four-bedroom, whatever they list, anything other than what's required, who, who, how is the contractor at fault there?
It is not. Contractor just built it.
And the listing agent makes the determination?
That's an interesting question. I think I could pursue, but I believe ultimately, I would imagine the owner has to sign off on the number of bedrooms. He has to be in agreement with the listing.
How would the owner, how would the owner, the person buying the house, how would they know that it's only a two-bedroom septic system? How are they going to know that?
Right.
It's in, it's in the owner's statement.
Yeah, there's two layers to that, right? There's a sticker on the electrical panel that says this is a two-bedroom house.
Those are, those are being, those are being used.
Right. And during the purchase of the home, the buyer has to sign a document, they have to sign off an initial on the deed restriction. So they've hopefully been presented with that, and that, I think, is another. It's disclosure. I mean, there are disclosure laws, I believe, that the real estate community has to adhere to with regard to deed restrictions.
But if it's a two-bedroom house, the listing agent listed as three, and it's on the deed restriction as two, then?
Then it's a violation.
The, the listing agent is the one who's done the violation.
But the owner had to be, had to be aware of what was being listed and agree to it.
You don't know any of these facts.
Well, that's why I mentioned intent. If you can demonstrate intent, that the listing agent knew it and did it anyway. He knew that there was a deed restriction and listed it in violation of that. I do believe that there must be something to that. How, how can you possibly not have the ability to enforce something that simple? It's very apparent to me.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So the ordinance are used, are you, am I understanding your statement that the adoption of the ordinance that we have has lessened your authority to deal with this problem? Did I, did I understand you to say that at the beginning?
Not really. What's stopping me is whoever the person is who signs off on issuing the citation. My opinion is this is enforceable right now as it is.
I understand that. I'd like to go back to my question.
Okay.
My question is that we have building code, and I believe you said at the beginning of your comment that the building code doesn't, you could deal with it in the building code, that we have this ordinance, and I, I'm not going to drop the words in your mouth, but I, I heard you, I thought what I heard you say is that we adopted this ordinance, and that somehow has created an avenue where people are able to do things that they would not have been able to do otherwise.
No, I don't think that's accurate. I, I think what I'm trying to say in that is the ordinance, what the intent of the ordinance, I believe, was, was to give us the ability to enforce it. An ordinance isn't really much good if you can't enforce it.
And you all, obviously, you understand the ordinance says what it says. It's not necessarily what was intended, but it's what it says. And we didn't regulate real estate agent listings in the ordinance, right?
Well, as I read that ordinance, I, I have a different interpretation of it than what you might have shared.
Well, it says applicants for building permits of residential structures, and it puts a burden on the applicant. This is a regulation of the building permit application process, okay? Now, the listing that you showed me, someone is selling a home and listing a house. That's, that may need to be something we address. That's not a building permit issue. That's a, that's an issue of how real estate is listed. That's an issue of ethics for a real estate agent. That's an issue of whether or not there's misrepresentation in a contract. I mean, there's a lot of of things. So the reason that we addressed the deed restriction, as at least as it relates to new construction, was that so that there's notice in the title chain that this is only approved for a two-bedroom, and banks would not be loaning money on a three-bedroom when it was only a two-bedroom. So I know you gave an example to us, and my statement to you was, it's not a violation of this ordinance, the fact that it's listed. It is potentially a violation of the deed restriction which was filed.
Right.
So then that means, that's to the benefit of the city. So then that means as a civil matter, I can send a cease and desist to them, and I can sue them to enforce the city's rights. I know you're shaking your head no, but I know what I'm talking about, Fred.
No, I understand that, sir. I know you can do a civil suit, but it's not necessary. We can do a combined.
It's not. At least they're striking me on the law.
Well, I'm not here to do that, but I am here to tell you that the building code gives me the authority to enforce.
And if that existed before this ordinance, and if the building code did it, then why were we allowing it to happen to begin with, Fred?
Because we didn't have the deed restriction, and now we have that.
But that.
Okay. I mean, if you.
I kind of calm down a little bit here. We got an issue that we're going to have to try to solve, right? And I remember when we, when we were kicking this ordinance around for the deed restriction, I mean, we went through a lot of iterations, right? And I know we talked about approaching the real estate agent part of it. They didn't think it was a good idea at the time, and I can't recall the exact conversation off the top of my head, but we did address it, and actually, maybe to put a line in the, in the seller's disclosure where it listed, are you, what is your septic permit per the Arkansas Department of Health? You have a number of bedrooms, but we didn't think we could go there. I say we, that was, I think, feedback, okay? That we couldn't address that. We wouldn't be able to accomplish that, right? So I remember that. First of all, Fred, I, I really appreciate your courage, really, in bringing this forward. This is not an easy topic. It's not an easy conversation, right? Because money is involved. Let's face it. That's the bottom line. And so it's going to piss people off. But I will tell you, this is one thing I lose sleep over, and I'm dead serious about that. I wake up thinking about it like in the middle of the night. I do. Because it's, it's not just, it's an issue for the community. It could be potentially an issue for me because I actually thought I had an issue when I first moved into my home, and it's a big deal. But this community faces in the future issues. If we don't solve some of this now, we may even face them even if we do solve it now because septic systems don't last forever. But we need to come up with a solution on this, and we need to note it. We need to stand by it, whatever it is. I have another question about the, you say you have another stack of complaints. Are those, who is the real estate agent providing this? And why are they not talking to code enforcement or someone who could write a citation? I mean, your jurisdiction, these are houses that certificate of occupancy has been issued or not? Is it, that would be my question because.
Well, it's been issued based on a condition of approval, and the condition of approval was.
So these are houses that are already finished. COs have been issued by you or one of your staff, and now a subsequent owner is listing a house, and you want to enforce the building code against them?
Okay, so let me, let me give you a scenario that may help you understand.
Before you do that, I'd like to interject. When this ordinance was passed, it was meant to cover new houses only. Everybody voted, understood that. Wasn't meant to cover 10 years later, 20 years later. We even said, maybe we need to go back some time and work with unused houses. But this is never anything but brand-new houses.
Maybe, maybe my perspective is a little bit different. I would ask that you would indulge me for one more moment here and let me paint a picture for you. If there is a gentleman or a woman who comes into our department and wants to get a permit for a restaurant, if they have 49 occupants in that restaurant, they're a B occupancy, and it needs one exit. It doesn't need a fire suppression system or a fire alarm system. It doesn't need panic hardware on the doors. But if you have one more occupant and you hit the number 50, you are now an A occupancy, which is an assembly occupancy. You need two exits. You need panic hardware. It's often very difficult to install all those things. What is the difference? If someone moves into a restaurant. If someone moves into a restaurant under a B occupancy, 49 occupants, and then they convert another room and they add 25 more occupants. I have every right, as a matter of fact, I'm, I'm directed to, uh, to enforce that violation. What is the difference if you're using the occupancy of a room? You're changing it, uh, from a, from something else into a bedroom, which now affects the septic system. How, how is that different?
I think it is different, Fred. And if we'd had an opportunity to talk about this before coming to front of the council, we could work through these things. Uh, but I think one is a change of use. And you're not necessarily talking about a change of use when it comes to a house.
No, you're correct. You're correct in that, but we are overloading the septic system, which is violating.
That's a problem, no one doubt. I, I'm not saying there's not a problem with what's going on. There's, there's a problem. I, I understand that. But we don't, we're not governed by our intentions or our feelings. I've gotta go with what the thing says and what the building code says. And if you all decide there needs to be a regulation of the real estate agent process or how process, projects are listed, that's fine. I would encourage whoever's communicating with you and providing all these examples out of the MLS, talk to people that can do something about it.
And I consider that, that's a much more, uh, I think.
I think you've got real estate agents going to each other and they may be using us to do that.
No, I, I, irregardless of that, if I, I don't have any, uh, strong feelings about the bickering among the real estate community, if there is any or, or not. What I want to do is protect the, the hel, the health and safety of our community and that is my focus, nothing else. The other things are fringe benefits. We have fairness, that we have, we have less crime. We have, um, all that, that kind of thing. People not being sold something that they think is a four-bedroom when it's really a two-bedroom and they overpay for it. Those are benefits that we get from following and enforcing the law. Okay? But the, the problem that I have, as Councilman Fowler has said, sleeping at night when knowing that, uh, I'm not doing my job to the fullest and I cannot sign off on these rooms if I know that's happening. So that's where we were last week. I, so we already have a situation here where I've, initially, when this was passed, I allowed unlimited rooms. So almost the next day, I had a six-bedroom house that, with a two-bedroom septic system. So I said, wait, wait a minute. I'm going to now revise that policy so we only allow one bedroom, one additional room rather, that is a potential sleeping room. And all the other rooms that they wanted, we opened up the wall so you can't really make that a sleeping room. Who's gonna wanna live in a, in a room that is, has one wall open to the hallway? You know, and change their clothes in there in front, you know, use that as a bedroom. It's not practical. So it reduces the potential of that to be used as a sleeping room. So now we just extended it to all rooms that were over and above a sleeping room and that's where the con, controversy began. Um, I'm just trying to enforce what I believe to be the intent of the code. That's really all I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to give anyone a hard time or, or be overbearing or, or be a thorn in the side of, of anyone in the community who wants to sell homes. But I do need to enforce the law according to my conscience.
Well, isn't the question, does the deed restriction and that notice on the electrical panel, is that enough notice to the buyer? Is this, is what we've already done good enough? Or should we do something more? That's the question, isn't it? So does the buyer always know because of those things?
Well, they have an opportunity to know, I can say that. I mean, there, there's, there's title work that's done before a, a house closes typically. And a bank does title work before they loan money. In fact, I came up with the example that I, that I'm aware of, the one that was brought to me. That was a bank was communicating with an agent saying, hey, this, this is an application for a loan. It's for a three-bedroom. We need to change this to a three-bedroom. And someone, an agent at this real estate agent, at this agency had said, no, it's a two. The city says it's a two. It can't be a three. So it worked. It absolutely worked.
The only time anything worked is when there was a threat of enforcement.
Right. Exactly. And that's what we, and, and so as somehow, now, of course, the, the communication I got, the, the email back and forth from this real estate agent, there had been communication between the bank and the real estate agent who had learned about it. And I don't know if there was some word that came from the city and it had been from you. I don't know. That communication, they knew it was limited to a two-bedroom. And so at least in that one circumstance, we, we wrote the, I wrote the letter to the guy and he, he got caught. He, he said a bunch of stuff that was ridiculous. But in the end, when you look at it, it looks like it had been revised and had been fixed. And so, I mean, I think as it relates to the ordinance you all adopted, which is dealing with the building permit process.
Mrs. Kelly, by the way, I, I saw the same kind of reaction when you wrote that letter.
Yeah.
And there was an instant reaction. And it just, it just illustrates so clearly how important it is that we have enforcement. If we have swift and meaningful enforcement, the, the guys that are breaking the regulations will go away very quickly, I believe.
I just have a quick question. I own some real estate. I don't know the first thing about it. Else I'm living in the house. So my question is, is I understand if you're building a new home, but people are gonna do what they're gonna do. I mean, they, they, they could buy a two-bedroom house with four bonus rooms and the minute everybody signs off on everything, they call up their buddy down the street or whatever and they come over and they rent out the house and suddenly they have a four-bedroom house.
Yeah.
So as far as the enforcement goes, back to what the mayor said, as far as new homes, that's the only, I mean, in my purview of, of enforcement, that's the only way that the city can kinda capture that.
See, that, that you make a great point. And I mean, what, what's the likelihood? We have a fourth amendment to the Constitution of the United States where illegal search and seizure, we each can't just go knock on the door and say, hey, are you using that as a bedroom? We cannot do that.
And, and that was kinda part two of what I was going to address was that, you know, like, your analogy with the restaurant, you know, that's public use. I mean, a, a restaurant is open presumably to the public. So people, word will get around, hey, did you guys go to the restaurant down the street? They busted a wall out. They've got a big room. I, I mean, next thing you know, and I'm sure the health department inspects and, you know, I don't know if the fire department goes in there and. I don't know who does annual things, but eventually that would get found out.
I'd like to go back to your first point because it's a great point. And, uh, I think that if you can audit for something that's in writing, where you've demonstrated intent to use the room or, or misrepresent that to some potential buyer who's going to now think, well, when they do a search on their MLS listing and they put in the number of bedrooms, if you put that in, if you're obeying the law, your property isn't gonna come up.
Right.
Where the other properties are. And these properties are the ones perhaps that are being misrepresented. So someone's buying this, they're going and, uh, and now they're, they're planning on, they've got that many kids. That's the, what they're gonna use that room for. It's been represented to them as a bedroom. They, they need that many bedrooms.
And that's kind of, I'm not gonna interrupt you, but that's exactly kinda my point is that in my mind, we need to dress specifically, I mean, I, and I don't wanna make Jason mad cause I. But I mean, if, if the house is being misrepresented in the listing.
There's law. Uh, the, if, if there's fraud going on, there's law against that already.
And that's what I'm getting at.
So it's some intentional fraud going on. And then.
And that is. Because then that's, then that's a matter of the person that purchases the home that they.
Well, there's civil fraud. There's, I mean, there could potentially be a criminal going on, but I mean, that would be.
So, but we can't, we can't hover over everybody making sure that they're listing that. I, I mean, I don't know how we, how we go about that.
Well, I mean, somebody may list a house for sale that says it has a swimming pool.
Right.
And then they're out of town. They come in, maybe they don't do the dillings they're supposed to do and there's no swimming pool there. Oh, I already bought a house. Well, there's gonna be a lawsuit for that. I mean, there, there are remedies. Is that a code, is that a citation? Is that coming to us and the government enforcing? No, but they're not without remedy. So I, I don't know what everybody was thinking when we adopted this ordinance that we have. But I think a principle of it was, that's why we wanna allow this deed restriction. And that way people will be on notice a little bit more and it won't be so much so about the listing. There'll be some verification in terms of the title work and people may be able to find out more about what's going on, learn the truth and then operate arms length based on that.
So I mean, it, it's essentially, I promise when you have all this done, that that's, um, I mean, it's buyer beware. I mean, is what it comes down to. And, but that's kinda my thing is that I don't understand, or I guess.
We, let me, let me say one thing.
Okay.
I think what, what is being said here is this. The building code has its regulations. Fred knows them, okay? No doubt. By adopting this ordinance, we have said, there's something we can interpret that code that would shut this down. We're not gonna do that and we're gonna allow it if you do this special thing. And so in a way, I don't think he's gonna say it. He can correct me and he's not, he's not making me mad. I'm, I'm, we're ex, we're concerned, okay? I wanna make sure that's clear. If really the city decided, we're gonna leave a little more grace as it relates to these things. So if people want these houses that have these extra rooms and there's a market for it and so we'll go ahead and let you do it, but you do the deed restriction because we got the septic concern and all of that. I think we probably could've shut this down before we did any of this, but it would've been shut down and there would have been nothing. And they would not be able to build a house because they wouldn't, some of these lots, they wouldn't be able to put a septic system big enough on to have the house that they wanted. And so we wanted to have bigger houses on smaller lots and, and allow people to kinda do this. And so in a way, what you passed lessened the regulation, believe it or not.
Because that's, that, that's where I get really confused because I read through the article that came out earlier and I was sitting there scratching my head. I was like, well, so, so what are we doing?
I really don't believe that we've lessened our stance. We've created a situation where we have a deed restriction that is now part of the approved construction documents. That's something that is enforceable in every case. I, I, here's, can I give you another analogy? I love analogies, right? Okay, so let's say we're a baseball team. We've been working out for a year. You guys spent about a year putting this thing together, right? We get to our first game and the guys roll up in the van and they're getting out. We're ready to have a baseball game and we forfeit because we might lose. Not a good plan after putting all that work into it. I suggest and propose that you write a, let me write a citation. Let them push back. Let me go fight it in court. If we win, we have a precedent that's enforceable. If we lose, what have we lost? What have we lost? We know that we need to look at the thing again.
But, but that's my question, I guess, to you, Jason, is that, is he able to write a citation at this point? I, that's where I get totally.
Building code gives the building official certain authority. I can tell you in the city of Bell Vista, we have never had the building official issue citations. All citations have been issued through code enforcement that are of this nature. I don't think there's been a citation issued for this because bill, the building code is typically enforced either through the denial of a permit, a stop work order or the denial of a certificate of occupancy on the back end. That's the way we get compliance. If it's not compliant, you're gonna stop. You're not gonna be able to enter that building. Now we're talking about circumstances that are, after a certificate of occupancy has been issued, which are not clearly regulated by the building code, though Fred believes otherwise. And I just don't think that's gonna work. What was presented to me was to write a violation of this ordinance. This ordinance has not been violated by a real estate agent. That's what I was presented with. And so, I mean, how, and we put, and I, I remember saying this at the time, I said two things at the time, I recall. One is this doesn't regulate the real estate agent broker process. And number two, when we wanted to put penalties in this ordinance, I suggested it was gonna create some confusion because our enforcement is typically through the permitting process and certificates of occupancy.
I gave my syllable approval based on that, on that tiered system of, of enforcement.
Well, and of course, the council is the one that put it.
No, of course, of course. They, they didn't see my advice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Basically.
Go ahead, Lily.
So the original ordinance is about new builds, new construction for the applicant. That's the intent. We just need to like reevaluate and admit and.
It depends on what the city wants to do. You're not without authority in this area, but the city needs to decide what it wants to do.
So we could admit it to be like, hey, or the sale of, you know, marketing or sale of homes, that or not. It's also an issue.
We're gonna have a line, I was gonna tell you, right, that we're gonna have a line of real estate agents out after other real estate agents for how they're listing houses.
Okay, so that was part of the original discussion, okay? That is why we adopted what we did.
Right.
Right? Because I think we said we have the real estate part of it, agent part of it and we probably can't, blah, blah, blah. And this was like the next closest best thing we could do to at least give new home buyers the knowledge that they were buying a house with a two-bedroom septic, even though it maybe had a third room that was gonna be a workout room, the library or whatever it was gonna be. Cause we couldn't regulate what they might do with that room. But at least they would know. And I would tell you, I can guarantee you, there are all kinds of people moving here that have no clue that they're gonna be on septic before they get here. And you say, well, that's part of what they should know. Well, if you've never lived anywhere that has septic, everything's been sewer. Like everywhere I've ever lived, uh, lived had sewer. I didn't know I had a septic system until I bought my house and moved in and saw wet spots in my yard. That's when I knew I had a septic.
Well, this is tangential to this discussion, but every week, uh, believe me, every week something comes up and it's more and more obvious we need to move. Right now, we're turning 100 to 150 houses a year on sewer. And we need to go way faster than that because we're building five. And if you wanna regulate salespeople, there's 500 new houses and there's 365 days a year, so that's more than sale every day. So somebody's gotta do that. Larry?
You make a good point there, but the reality is those houses, those 150 houses that are going from sewer are not the new houses being built. Those are the old houses all around town. So they're the oldest subdivisions typically or in the core area of the city, which was developed originally.
Well, some of them are there, but that's.
Yeah, yeah, because of vacant lots and things like that, yeah. But the reality is we, we have a, a hole in the dike and we need to plug it and we need to fix it. Anyone can go out and research the real estate data on properties for sale and come up with the same list that, that Fred has and has received by gratuitity from some agent or agents. So all of us could find that same information. His staff could do that as a part of a work assignment. So it's not that the information is hidden of what's happening. The reality is, is that we, we have some very bold real estate agents that don't like to abide by the rules and we need to close that hole and plug it. And we need to enforce in one fashion or another. Whether we take them to court, we fine them, give them a citation. Uh, we need to administer the intent of this ordinance that we adopted a year or two ago.
I have to, I have to enforce the ordinance, not the intent of the ordinance.
I, I understand that the intent of the ordinance was to close the gap.
But the words exactly, yes, but.
And, and so if we have to change the language or amend the.
Now we're talking.
amend the ordinance to address the hole in the dike, then let's get it done. ASAP.
Yeah. Jason, if, if a amendment to this ordinance, uh, uh, providing a penalty for, uh, mislisting or mislisting a, a property for sale, would that be enforceable?
Well, I guess, but I mean, it, it would take a lot of, it's gonna take some investigation. Who listed it? Who put the data into the MLS that misrepresented it? Um, not just who has it, I mean, because MLS is available to everyone. There's a listing agent. I don't know how that works. But there, we would have to be able to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that John Doe or Jane Doe, whomever we've written a citation to, entered incorrect data into the MLS in violation of an ordinance regarding how properties are listed. And I think that's gonna be hard to establish because they're not gonna cooperate. And so I don't know if we, I mean, if you find a listing that's wrong, you've asked, Jerry, so I mean, is there a first point at that point to get into the computer to determine who entered the data? I mean, this, this are how criminal, but these are how investigations work, as you know. And find out who input that data. Or depending on how the, the ordinance is listed, if it just says a listing agent shall not be the listing agent on a property which misrepresents. We know who the listing agent is, but, uh, you know, there, there may be something we could do along those lines or we wouldn't have to go that far. Uh, but I, I don't, I mean, we gotta have staff to do that and I don't know if code enforcement's gonna do that or he's gonna need more staff to do that.
Uh, may I ask a question? Uh, may I ask a question? Uh, isn't there perhaps a broker or someone who has ultimate authority over what goes into the listing?
I don't know.
Actually.
I know that in, in the building division, I have the ultimate authority. If someone does something who's one of my deputies, it's my responsibility. So there's gotta be someone at the top of the.
We're talking, we're talking about criminal responsibility, and we're talking about citations. We're talking about whether, whether it's a, for, whenever you issue a citation, you, you've turned a, a, an issue that we're dealing with into a criminal matter. It may just be a city ordinance violation, but it is now a criminal matter. So, you mentioned Fourth Amendment, they've got rights, I've gotta prove things now beyond a reasonable doubt. I can't just go to court and say it's more likely than not. It, it's, a lot of things kick in when you do that. And so, um, it, it, this is not the way to determine this at a council meeting, at a work session. This is something that needs to be worked out in a policy manner, and then to come to the council with something that's worked out with a solution, rather than open into questions. I would say, I don't know who asked, but I'll, I'll offer it. I don't know if anyone did, but the, the mayor makes the determination of the, the mayor enforces all law, okay? He, he's got a police department, he's got code enforcement, he's got building inspectors, they all have the authority that they have. But the council does not have the authority to say, you will issue a ticket to somebody in this circumstance. So I wanna make clear, I mean, certainly you write the law, the ordinances, and you determine what those rules are, but in terms of how they are enforced, that's inherently an executive function, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Uh, I, I wanna say something. He asked about ultimate authority. Linda Lloyd has gone to the, uh, the regional authorities of Realtors, trying to get them to enforce this, and they were not interested in doing that. So she tried going under that angle. You know, this is a discussion, and the reason we brought it up is, is see if you guys wanna do anything about it, you can figure out what to do. But, uh, the other thing is, you know, he mentioned a point where they'll list it as three-bedroom, then down later on, they're saying, oh, by the way, this is a two-bedroom septic.
Technically, two, he mentioned that.
That's because when you go for them in court, oh, no. And see, I told the buyer, so the buyer agrees this stuff.
You know, so, we, we've had like a long conversation with Jason, and something is to sit down and start crafting something, that's the bottom line. There's one other twist, and I don't wanna go down this path with a long conversation, but we have short-term rental permits issued, I'm gonna say four hundred and seventy-some, and a hundred and some of them are listing their homes for greater occupancy than what the septic system, the, the permit allows. So that's another thing. If you, if you go, if you, if you address real estate, you're gonna have to address that as well, because that is public. Because they're gonna, they're gonna bring it out. So anyway, I don't know who starts crafting this, but.
What if we eliminate the, trying to cite Realtors? What if we just do property owners? Those, those people can commit violations. If there's no, been no violation for two or three sales of the home, and then the fourth owner starts, he, he's the one who offers it for sale, we can still cite him, because, because don't they have to be aware of, of their own?
It's the owner's statement that, that you're filling out. But, that's the thing that you're reading when you read about the, uh, a two-bedroom limitation, but it's a three-bedroom house. That's the owner's statement of what the house is all about. They have to sign that, I believe, in the.
And what if we were to come up with a, a type of a due process that we can repeat in every case? So for example, we come, we, we get a listing, and I issue a notice of violation to the property owner to remove that listing. If they fail to do it, he would have some say in the matter, I would imagine, it's his home.
We can't just order people to take, I mean, courts order things, and, you know, we.
We do it all the time. It's a notice of violation, it's a violation.
We're talking about something different, Fred. Not all laws work the same way.
I understand that, but I believe that there's a link. When we create a, a construction document, it triggers other code sections that are now applicable, not just the ordinance.
Well, thank you, Fred, I really appreciate your input. We're gonna have to move on to other topics.
I do wanna just say thank you so much, and even though I am passionate about this, I do respect each and every one of you very much. I, I appreciate you, what you do, so, um, just the fact that we can work together as a team is, is a great blessing to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. Knowing that it's, that we have an issue with that part of our code, we, we guess need to, to work on fixing the hole in the document.
Okay. Let's go back to the top of the agenda. Next item is an ordinance requiring candidates for election to any municipal offices, city budgets, uh, in addition to any other requirements, state laws, file campaign contribution, expenditure reports with the Bell Vista City Clerk. It's efficient time for voters to make use of such information prior to the beginning of early voting and for other purposes. And this is on third reading, and it was tabled for a month.
I, you know, so, because we just had a long discussion, a long conversation, I mean, there were some comments I was gonna make, but I guess it's time, I'll save those for next week, but I would say next week, I fully intend to bring this to a vote in council and close this. See what happens then.
The AG, as far as I know, I, I looked today, there's not anything yet from them.
And I, you know what, I've, I've done extensive research on my own, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a state rep, I'm not the attorney general. I will just say, there's not anything that I read, that I saw anywhere that says that we are prohibited from doing this.
The story that I've heard is that we would expect to get the opinion back from the Attorney General's office before June first.
You know more than I do, I haven't heard that, so maybe, maybe Representative McElhenney asked him to have some information.
Well, I saw Rep. McElhenney then at the open house at that Walton's ad, and she just indicated to me she thought it would be soon.
Yeah, I pushed her a little bit, she expected that indication.
Well, uh, okay. Item B is a resolution expressing the opinion of City Council, nonpartisan by that citizens should be highly vigilant regarding the influence of partisan and special interest group campaign contributions during Bell Vista nonpartisan municipal elections. So this was tabled also. Same thing, yeah. Any comments on that? Okay. Item A, a new business weighting the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Hamilton Medical Inc. and not to exceed ninety-one thousand for the purchase of five Hamilton T-one intelligent transport ventilator packages for use by the fire department. Chief, could you say a few words?
Most people probably don't notice this one, the competitive bid. We go through the competitive bid process, that's why it's an award, the way we're competitive bidding. On this particular product is a salt source, which means items of this ventilators we use, or things we're looking at to use in this ventilator are only provided by Hamilton. So, that's why we didn't write for the bid, that's why we didn't bid for it. It is five.
Is there a basis for justifying the salt source?
There is, this, this particular ventilator, we look at the best way and the best ease of the product, and the best product for our, our patients we're servicing. And with this ventilator, when we hook that, that patient up to a ventilator, and we have to leave that ventilator while it's ventilating for somebody, these are ventilating, putting my support into somebody else's lungs. When we walk away from that ventilator to do something else, that ventilator is designed to adjust size and the weight of that person, whether it's a pediatric adult, older adult. It's made to adjust that volume to meet their size capacity. Nobody else has that. So that's why we chose this ventilator, part of the reason why we chose this ventilator, and we didn't write for competitive bidding, because they're the only ones that offer that type of service. Everything else is basically the same.
So are you thinking of going to third final on this, if you'd be willing to?
Yes.
Is there?
How, how long have these folks been in business?
They've been in business for a long time. We've actually, we actually use Hamilton Vidia ventilators before we got the, the Allot health ventilators we had, so that was probably a good fifteen, twenty years ago, so.
And the ones they're replacing are, what, more than ten years old?
Yes, they are, that's correct. We have three right now that's in operation, because the other, if you're broken down, and you can't get parts from them. Those parts are not available, then it settles up in the H P three thousands.
Yeah.
And so, is ordinance, it'd be available purchases at the end of July, in the city, I expect?
Yes, it's not, no, no, no. It's not an ordinance of a general and permanent nature, therefore, it's immediately effective. So it's ordinances of a general and permanent nature that have that delay.
Okay.
So like, if you're gonna outlaw jaywalking or something, you know, whatever, but this type of ordinance would become immediately effective.
Yes, and I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, Jason, because I forgot to mention about that, being the ordinance and so.
Well, it's part of the capital budget, it's what.
That's correct.
Target, or in the budget.
We, I believe we have a hundred thousand in there in capital projects.
Sure we're gonna be within budget?
Yes, we're gonna be actually in the budget.
You might as well stay for the next one, is Resolution B, awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Central Alabama Training Solutions in the amount of fifty-eight thousand nine eighty-nine forty-three for the purchase of an air cascade system for use by the fire department. And this did have competitive bidding, didn't it?
Yes, it did. We actually went out for bid and got one bid back at Katz, Central Alabama. Central Alabama Training Solutions, and there is a.
There's a typo on the number. It should be, is it five-nine-eight-eight-nine?
No, it's five-nine-nine-nine-nine-fourty-three.
Okay, so we'll correct that, and it'll be in your packet, so the number, there will be a slight change on the, the type of the numbers, sorry about that.
So, what that is, is we have one, one air cascade system in the city, one, um, stationary air cascade system in the city, it's, it's at our main fire station. And we have one mobile cascade system that's on a rescue truck. So the rescue truck goes to the fire, we fill our air bottles, these are firefighting air bottles, compressed air, that we use in burning buildings and stuff, for the smoke, or ideal, uh, medium-depth health and life atmospheres, we use that air. So, for the training facility, since we're gonna be doing a lot of burning, down there, a lot of training burns, then we can fill our bottles on-site at the training center while we're, while we're using a training center for burning, and we can also use it within the city when we need to fill extra bottles that we're having to fill a lot of bottles, we can actually do it at the training center and at the, um, Station One, Station, Station Fire Station. Which has been needed, we're, we need another air cascade system in the city, for stationary.
So do you have one of those now?
We do, it's at Station One.
Oh, okay.
And we've had it, we've had it since I've been working down.
This will go at the training center, then?
This right here is going to, at the training center. It'll be stationed at the, at the training center, they can use it when they're doing the training there, the type of facility. And then we'll be able to use the citywide.
It's, it's in possession as well.
That's correct, it's in capital.
By the way, before you go, I just, I just mentioned the open house at the, at the training center. That was really well received, it was really well done. You know, we came, and the, and the, and the public really came out, and it was really interesting. This, I mean, this is impressive. What's that?
They came out for the food.
No, you're right.
The hot dogs were good.
That is right, free food, free food, people's gonna get. Um, we were, just so y'all know, we were about three percent under budget on that project, so, um, ended up around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to get it done.
Congratulations.
We're just passing on to the next person who wants to spend money tonight, right?
No, you can just spend it on one-time center.
Well, we're spending on that.
Well, that's one thing that I asked you about, was that if we could do that, if we could take a weekday, or a weekend, possibly, for, so the kids could get out there, and, because that's, I mean, there was a lot of people there, but not many.
That's right.
You.
Yes, and that, that is a very good idea, and that's something we've kicked around since I talked to you about that. And I think it's pretty easy to do, um, you know, far having a weekend, or a Saturday, or whatever, for people to come out and enjoy the same thing, so.
Call it Kids Weekend.
Call it whatever, what do you think, Jerry? Kids Weekend?
Kids Weekend. Kids, uh. Do the schools do outings? Could you do an outing program for the schools around?
They better hurry, they got like four days left.
Well, I'm, I'm, but you can do that every year.
We do do kids outings, yes, we do have field day.
And then for the building tomorrow, we have that Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And then, maybe next year, there's, I think I'll confirm, well, many schools for fourth grade students, and they can like pick a topic they're really interested in, like mountain biking, or firefighting, or whatever, and basically, you could go like, go to the fires, and you can go see how it works, and you go, so that'd be a program that we're gonna be doing next year as well.
I thought it was interesting that the open house, uh, they had an emergency fire call, and a bunch of the firemen left the scene, obviously, to go to the call. Demonstrated the whole point of having the fire training center in your city.
Oh, yeah.
You can be there training, if there's a call, you can go to it.
That's right.
You couldn't do it if you're out of town.
And that has been a very hot building, hot, I mean, they've been using it about every day. Matter of fact, we got a regional class going on around here, so.
Great. Okay, next one is a resolution approving an auxiliary and part-time officer policy for the police department. Chief Graves?
Yeah, this is just, uh, adding this auxiliary officer, um, position to our part-time officer, um, policy. Auxiliary officers are just basically, a lot of times, retired officers, somebody with specific skills we may need, who just kinda wanna volunteer their time. Example might be in the IT area, somebody who knows something about IT, computer forensics. We actually have a city employee now who, who used to do some part-time officer-type work, who's interested in helping us out in the computer forensics area, and so, we want to implement an auxiliary policy before we do that, okay? So, um, in this, we've had some other individuals who have been interested in the past, retired officers, again, with specific skills that we may need, and we don't specifically have, that want to just volunteer their time to come in and help us do those things. Um, and it's, it's not gonna volunteer on part-time type bases.
State law authorizes auxiliary police officers, and it regulates the number, and their authority, and how much training they have to have, and all of that. The training requirement and all that, you see in that policy is based off the state law requirement. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All the state here at the end of the next year.
Yeah. The next one is amending the twenty-twenty-four city budget and approving the addition of two commissioned police officers for the police department. And before he starts explaining it, at the beginning of the year, he, he wanted three police officers, and we said, hey, let's keep it out of the budget, and just wait and see how things are going, and, uh, and wait till the middle of the year, so you could.
So, and so that's where we're at, so, so really, these positions would be starting July first, okay? And the positions would backfill some of what we've already had established. When we took over code enforcement in the department last year, I had to, had to move around some resources to manage those code officers. Uh, and then also, when we took on this Axon body worn in-car camera program, which by the way, all the cameras are installed in the cars now, they're out there operational, so that's been a big success. I had to move an officer into that position to specifically manage that position, uh, and, and work, and do all the redactions and stuff. And so, whenever we do things like that in a police department, the, the majority of the officers are in patrol, they always get pulled out of patrol, and so these officers are, are to, to fill those positions that, that we've already taken out of patrol. Now, I was gonna, I told the mayor, you know, we, we decided during the budget cycle, I'll wait till mid-year. I'm coming a month early, I'm not coming in June, because if I wait until June, I miss the next academy, okay? So these officers have to be working in the police department as of July first, if approved, to get them into August eleventh academy, okay? The academy requires us to have all this stuff done so far in advance, they've given us academy slots. And so I'm asking council to approve this this month, okay, for, to be in effect, uh, July first, and they'll give me the time between approval and July first to, to get candidates hired. They have to give two weeks' notices and get them on board July first, so that we can get them at August, in that August academy, okay? And so, and the, the money's broken down here, salary and wages, uh, or salary and benefits, sixty-nine thousand for half the year, uniform and equipment, another seven thousand, um, to, to outfit them for the remainder of the year, for a total of seventy-six thousand dollars, and the funding source would be the general fund.
And this will be expensed moving forward?
I'm sorry.
It'll be expensed moving forward.
This will be expensed moving forward.
So we're talking about a hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars annually?
If you add, yeah, just double, just double it, yeah.
Do you have a good list of the figures?
I actually, I already have actually, these positions filled if approved, I already have qualified candidates who've already been through the process, and they're just waiting for the word to go. There are actually some military guys who just came out of the military. I think they're both MPs, actually, so they do come with this, without law enforcement experience, but experience in this type of work.
We've been having pretty good luck, like those people.
No, so, this isn't like to challenge your, your, your initiative, your officers. It, it has more to do with approving non-budgeted items, right, in, in the year where we've already approved a budget, now we're adding on to it, right? So this is, this is just kind of an opportunity to bring this up. I, I had, had a conversation with Ken, and Kim, and actually.
Uh, I, I had, had a conversation with Ken and Kim, and actually, what kinda spurred a little bit of, uh, a little bit of extra work that I did on the budget, moving, looking forward, or I should say, actually, not budget, but on city expenses and revenue. Uh, and Kim and I, I think sometime in the, in the not-too-distant future here, uh, are, are probably gonna have a conversation with the council just so we can dial everybody in what we look like moving forward. Because during our budget conversations that we were having for twenty-twenty-four, you know, we're looking at eleven, eleven million dollars in capital outlay. This year, we're looking at almost six million for, uh, twenty-twenty-five, three-point-seven million twenty-twenty-six, uh, four million in twenty-twenty-seven. And I know, you know, we have like about twelve million, twelve-point-five million in reserves after we have already taken out the twenty, twenty-five percent we're required to keep. But I'm looking forward, because I was real concerned that we were gonna be, uh, in, in, in arrears in about a year or two, like next year, right? So I took actuals and I did this based on history. Uh, I have the year-ending financial reports all the way back to like, you know, two thousand seventeen, so I'm able to build that moving forward. And I broke out our expenses, I didn't actually break it out, Kim breaks it out like this, but salary, benefits and operational expenses, okay? And based on the history, and I use, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two versus twenty-one and twenty-three versus twenty-two, the most recent three years, because when you're looking at COVID twenty and twenty-one, the, the, the numbers were just kind of all screwed up, right? But just looking forward, cause I, and again, I thought we were in the hole. Well, based upon the projections that I did, and I sat down with Kim and she looked at it and she said, you know what? I, I, I think you're, you're, you're probably really good here on what you're looking at. Understanding that there are changes all the time, right? You can't, you can't take everything in full consideration, but based on history. Uh, in, at the twenty-twenty-seven, uh, I have a projected that we will, uh, have spent about eight-point-six million dollars more than what our revenue will be. Uh, that's including our capital, right? That's, that's salary, that's benefits, that's operational, that's capital. Well, we've got twelve-point-five million, let's just say, that's unassigned reserve right now. So, twenty-twenty-seven, I'm projecting that we're gonna be about three-point-seven million dollars to the good, right? Not in the hole. Again, but now we have unbudgeted items, right? And those unbudgeted items, this year will be seventy-six thousand, but next year will be a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty that, a hundred and fifty after that. Well, you're already like five-hundred thousand dollars into the three-point-seven million, I'm just kinda rambling up. So I'm just saying as a city council, because one of the things we're responsible for is the management of the budget amongst other things, right? So as we start doing unbudgeted items moving forward, we really need to be thinking about what we're doing. Now, we're gonna have big, big changes in the community moving forward, right? With the announcement of, uh, Runway Group and Blue Crane. We know we're gonna have some stuff that maybe will be really positive to the city as far as generating extra cell stacks revenue. But we can't bank on that right now, we don't know how far in the future that is. But all I'm saying is, we, we've got something we can look at moving forward to know that every time we spend, we're gonna be moving into this potential, uh, three-point-seven million dollars it looks like we might have at the end of twenty-twenty-seven, right? It could be more, it could be less.
You just tell him you can't have any more people for the next three years and I'll take care of that. Cause you know he's gonna ask for them every year.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know we're gonna give him, if he asks for two, we're gonna give him one. Just tell him you can't have anybody for the next couple of years.
Yeah. No, I'm not saying that.
But that's, it's, it's as easy as you can make it, cause it's not rocket science.
You know, but anyway, well, I, me, I like to know, I wanna know, right? I just can't fly by the seat of my pants, that's why I did this. It's another one of those things I lose sleep over, quite frankly.
So, and I, I don't disagree, and I came to the mayor, I justified three, I thought I needed three. I think I do need three, he held me to, you know, he held me to two. And so I think the mayor's already doing some of that, but, uh, Councilmember Wozniak is right. I'm, I'll come to you with what I need. I think, and I told the mayor this, I had a lot of growing to do when I got here, the department was really understaffed, okay? I think we're at a good place now and I won't have the, the necessarily the growth, uh, moving forward that I've had in the past, just, it depends on what happens in the community as well. But, but I don't see that, that exponential growth that I've had, though there will be growth. But again, I'll come to you with what I need, I'll justify what I need, and you folks have to do what you have to do.
Well, I want you to understand too, this, these comments aren't specific like the police.
Well, I understand.
This is any unbudgeted items, and we had several of them.
Sure.
In twenty-twenty-three, right? So every one of those, we really need to look hard on.
But this, this again was out of, out of caution because we wanted to make sure the budget was going to support this. And so that's why the mayor decided, uh, that we weren't gonna put this into the budget in twenty-twenty-four initially. We're gonna see how things, if the trend line was continued to look good before we, before we did that, that's why we're here now.
That's actually what you put together.
Oh, I hear, you're doing one's comment. Nah, it's okay, I, I wanna sleep at night.
Okay, the next one is Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into contract with Superior Automotive group asylum springs pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of two twenty-four Dodge Durango. And we've changed that, I believe that's been changed to one. So the price would be about half of that, yeah, sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five.
Chief, you wanna talk about that?
Sure, so this is, this is, and this will be out of impact fees and, and I thought initially deal, working with Kim, this is to support the new positions, okay, for vehicles. Um, just to make sure, you know, vehicles are a cost, they're hard to get, and we need to sort of keep a, keep ahead of the trend so we can keep it manageable every year. Um, so, but working with, 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 uh, Kim, um, we only had enough impact fees right now for, for one Durango, it's sixty-five thousand, that's what I'm asking for, is one Durango, sixty-five thousand. This is fully outfitted, that's why it's more than the normal Durango cost, cause I'm just gonna let Superior Automotive, because we're so far behind in getting our other cars outfitted, I'm just gonna let them, them bring this to us fully outfitted, okay? Um, and so that's what this resolution is for, for, for one Dodge Durango fully outfitted, sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, using impact fees for that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, and the next one's a resolution setting a public hearing before the city council on June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, at six P M regarding vacation of a public easement out or near Gordon Hollow Road. Taylor, is this yours?
Yeah. Um, so I did include the whole packet that we'll also be discussing next month, should you guys, um, approve this resolution on Monday, this coming Monday. But essentially, what's happened is the planning commission has approved a property line adjustment, uh, and they proposed to vacate easements along those property lines and then move them and then establish new easements. So we're not vacating easements, utility easements, um, completely. We're basically just relocating them and moving them south. And we're actually acquiring more easements, um, through this property line adjustment. We actually acquired planting screening easements as well as a large drainage easements for some culverts that cross under Scottsdale. Uh, so we're not at a loss here despite the vacate, it's simply just a relocation and the planning commission accepted new easements as of Monday. So state law requires us to have a public hearing on that, so that's what we're doing tonight. You guys have to direct Wanda to put a legal ad posting in the Weekly Vista or some other circulatory newspaper, and then we will hold a public hearing, uh, the regular meeting in June. And then you may consider the ordinance that would actually vacate these, um, easements, so. Happy to take any questions, and Jason, if I missed anything, please add.
All you're doing is saving a hearing.
Yes.
The me of this is gonna happen in June.
A question for you, you, you talked about vacating certain, uh, public easements and acquiring additional ones. Will we have a cost to acquisition of those easements?
No, um, we didn't have to, it was done through the property line adjustment, which is a development code ordinance requirement. So those have already been accepted by the planning commission at our regular meeting this month. So we already have them.
So at, at no cost to the city?
No cost.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, next one's Resolution approving application and expressing support for an Arkansas DOT Transportation Alternatives Program eighty-twenty reimbursable grant and associated Walton Family Foundation grant for a communications education and outreach project related to traffic and trail safety. Uh, Justin?
Sorry about all the coughing back there. Um, alright, so this is kinda complicated, or it seems to need some explaining, so, uh, I've written out some notes, I'll read them to you guys. If you ever have anything, just pop in and let me know, so. Um, tonight I'll be talking about two different RDOT TAP grant opportunities that broadly speaking, address the same issue from two different angles. These grants require a signed resolution during the application process, which is why we're here tonight. So this one, uh, I've numbered them, this is number one. Uh, tackles the problem from an educational point of view, while the next one will approach it from a multimodal infrastructure point of view. So for the purposes of RDOT TAP Grant One, we will discuss the problem, the proposed solution, how we will implement that solution, and how we will plan on funding this important work. Uh, yeah. So the problem is, of course, avoidable conflicts between street user groups. Um, specifically, we're trying to address conflicts and crashes between vehicle drivers and vulnerable user groups with a focus on cyclists and pedestrians. As you may recall, city council pledged to address this issue when you adopted Division Zero Safety Action Plan last fall. While the plan does call for policy changes and infrastructure improvements, it also highlights the importance of shifting the perception of bikes using our roadways. This can be done through educating our community on the relevant laws and best practices regarding sharing the road. There are a variety of reasons that drivers and cyclists may conflict on the roadway. We've all been on multiple sides of that, uh, situation, I'm sure. Some are genuine, where everyone has done everything right, but there still may be an inconvenience. The cyclist was right, the driver was right, but there's still an inconvenience, that, that's going to happen. This isn't gonna change that, nor will really anything else. Some are malicious, such as the cyclists that recently had drinks thrown at them as a car passed by, or the accounts of drivers blaring their horns and running cyclists off the road. Fortunately, these instances are rare. However, a quick glance at some Facebook pages, uh, you'll see this type of behavior celebrated and encouraged. So that tells us we do have a, more of a culture problem with bikes on the road rather than just, uh, you know, uh, an incon, a minor inconvenience to some people. Uh, the majority of conflicts, however, are not out of malice. They're simply due to being uninformed or misinformed. This applies to actions from drivers and cyclists alike. We're all aware of our narrow roadways, our nonexistent shoulders and our blind curves, but we may not all be aware of situations where a cyclist should claim their lane, how to hand signal an upcoming turn, or when it's appropriate to pass a cyclist. This is precisely what this campaign is aiming to address. Uh, this is something that affects all of us in this room and all of our citizens. That means we're all part of the problem and we will also all need to be part of the solution. So how do we inform an entire community on such a topic? Uh, I think this was kind of a daunting task, how do we reach, you know, a variety of people? We met with Tool Design, a nationwide leader in this area. They're performing similar projects regionally. For the planning commission as well as for neighboring cities, Bentonville, Rogers, Springdale, Fayetteville and Centerton. Uh, we're unique, we all know Belvista's roads are unique, our demographics are unique, so, uh, Tool agreed that Belvista needed its own, uh, approach to educating our people. They built out a proposal, it's in y'all's packet, includes widespread data collection and analysis so that we can get a firm understanding of the root cause. So they plan on doing a lot of public, uh, input sessions, surveys, things of that nature. Once they figure out kind of where people are on bikes on the road and how much they hate it or how much they love it, they, uh, have a twelve-month implementation plan where, uh, we'll start trying to roll that out and get people's perceptions shifting a little bit more toward bikes, bikes are allowed to be on the road, bikes can share the road safely, uh, it happens all over the world, so. Uh, a big part of that, from the driver's perspective, will be for them to empathize with cyclists and view them as humans. They probably attend church together, or their kids may attend, uh, school or play sports together. Uh, but currently, these, a lot of people don't view cyclists as humans. They view them as an inconvenience, uh, strictly. Uh, we also hope they understand that road cycling is a sport, a hobby and a mode of transportation, whether, some people don't want to be out riding their bike, but maybe that's how they had to get to work that day. Um, it's not the same as mountain biking, and the two should not be conflated, I, I hear that all the time. Bikes need to stay on the trails. Well, it's, it's a totally different type of bike, totally different type of bike rider. Um, we hope they gain knowledge about why a cyclist is riding the way they are, learn how a cyclist is protected by the law, learn how and when to safely pass a cyclist, understand that certain times or places you may be more likely to encounter a cyclist, and understand the importance of driving safely and being undistracted. So, from the cyclist's perspective, uh, because this, for this to be, have any impact, it needs to be geared towards cyclists and drivers. So the cyclists, we need them to empathize with drivers. The guy behind you might actually be in a hurry, he might have somewhere to be, he might be causing an inconvenience. Ken, is there anything you can do to help the situation? So be proactive. Uh, learn and use proper riding techniques, including claiming your lane, the three-foot rule, hand signals, speed limits, the Idaho stop, two abreast for a single file, et cetera, et cetera. There's a million best practices for riding on the road. A lot of our cyclists don't know them, or they don't use them, and so that hurts their, hurts their cause. And then ultimately, we hope that cyclists through this process will, uh, perform a self-evaluation and decide if them and their equipment are competent enough to safely ride on the road. Cause at the end of the day, some people just shouldn't be riding on the road, uh, you know? And, and we hope that through this educational process, that can occur to some people. Hey, maybe this isn't for me, I should stick to the paved trails or the soft surface trails. So then lastly is how are we gonna fund it? I know you guys love this slide, I feel like you should love this slide. Uh, eighty percent, uh, would come from the RDOT TAP grant, which, uh, stands for Transportation Alternatives Program. Um, and then twenty percent, uh, Walton Family Foundation has agreed to be our twenty percent matching funds. So it says zero dollars, now there actually would be a one percent, I believe, from the city. So it's a neighborhood of a thousand dollars, uh, as an RDOT administrative fee. So that's, that one, in a nutshell, it's trying to educate our people on how to share the road safely. It's a problem that exists currently, it's only gonna continue to get worse as we continue to grow, as we continue to... I mean, if you guys read the, the Blue Crane article, it was heavily focused on cycling and they talked about how Belvista is gonna start stealing some spotlight away from Bentonville and the cycling world, things like that, so. It's a problem that I suspect getting more and more prevalent, so I think it would be prudent of us to tackle it on the front end.
Is there any questions?
I have a couple comments.
Okay.
Um, I'm not anti-bike at all. I think I mentioned it before, I've been hit by a car. So, crash test building right here. So, my biggest thing with educating, and I hate to frame it this way, but it almost all seems kind of pie in the sky until there's licensing or there's, there's something that is concrete. Because right now, and, and you, you commented that there's mountain bikers and there's cyclists. I could take a thirty-minute drive around the city and encounter five different cyclists that ride five different ways. One of them will be in the middle of the road, I mean, I've sat at stoplights before, behind ten guys, you know, suited out, and, you know, they do have an attitude, some of them, you know? And, and I know this is what we're trying to address, but the, the concern that I have, until there is something that says, we took the test, we know the rules, then it, it, it's just. i- it's just like you're saying, that that not everybody knows, and not everybody rides the same. And it's just gonna be, it's just gonna be this constant, you know, rolling over of, well, I didn't know, or, you know, because right now, the onus is squarely on the drivers. And I'm not saying this as all drivers are perfect. I mean, yeah, I, and and this, this has not a knock on the cycling community one bit.
Yeah.
I think it's great. But that's what I mean, is that there needs to be a uniform, concrete, something that people can point back to and say, this, these are the rules. You broke the rules, either car or cyclist. Right now, the car guys, the 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 drivers, they have those rules that, that puts them squarely in blade.
Yeah.
Because it's always gonna be his word against his word, or whatever, you know, with with the way the cycling is set up right now, because there's just nothing that we can point to that that says, well, this is how you're supposed to do it.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of laws that regulate how to ride your bike on the road, federal level, state level, not so much locally. Uh, and and how I envision this going would be, uh, there's a, the League of American Cyclists has a educational program that they do. I would just take that, except almost none of it applies to us. But they have an online quiz, so people are possibly incentivized through some means. If you're a driver and not a cyclist, and you don't really care about driving safely around cyclists, you would need to be incentivized. But regardless, they have a quiz. You go on, you take, you watch a series of videos with how they do it, and you answer the questions, and it's, it's, I learned stuff watching it. Mostly their stuff's geared toward big cities. Um, but so I wanna do something similar for specifically to Belvista. Say, there's an intersection at uh, Houston and Commonwealth, just as an example. Uh, what would be, what would the, what should a cyclist be expected to signal if they're turning west on Commonwealth? Things like that, uh, in a quiz form where riders have to demonstrate they understand. And then drive, from the driver's perspective, they'll know what a cyclist is doing when they're not just waving their hands around, you know, they're, they have meaning. So the, I would like a quiz or some sort of, you know, something along those lines.
Well, and that's what I mean, is that we have an opportunity to be foundational in something like this.
Yeah.
Because, and I'll tell you right now, I've never seen one cyclist do this number or this or that.
Didn't know what those are.
Not one time.
Yeah.
And and like I said, this is not a knock on anybody.
There are bad cyclists, and and I get stuck behind them every day. I think, God, what are y'all doing right now, you know? And so I I understand how it feels to be the driver, and I, and I'm the same way when I'm on my bike, you know, so.
But foundationally too, and on the other side of that, is I'd almost like to see a cyclist, you know, when somebody goes to get their driver's license, there needs to be a component. I mean, because this is, you know, our community moving forward, everybody's community.
I agree. That's where I've been, that's, that's the thought I keep having, is how high does something like this go? Does it get to the point where it's in drivers?
Well, I would be curious to see how they do it, like, I don't, I'm not gonna talk like I know what I'm about, like the Netherlands, or, you know, where there's high concentration of bicyclists on the road.
Yeah.
And see what they do. You know, I would, I would like to see what that, what that looks like.
Yeah.
How bicycles have a right away. Well, I know, but I, but I'm just saying.
They're the bikes out under the cars, you know, but, yeah, say for Austin, Texas, or Portland, or some of the other, uh, Asheville, North Carolina, really bike-centric cities, um, they're doing similar stuff to this. It's not quite to the level that I think we should take ours to. They also have more on-street infrastructure than we do.
And that's.
We're the rare situation where we have this, like, bursting cycling scene and virtually zero infrastructure on the streets. So we're a unique issue.
And that's scary. I, you know, I'm all for this. I think it's great. It's okay.
The sad part is, we weren't built for this, and now it's getting pushed on us. Uh, and it's coming. We can't stop it. I understand that. But, but it's coming. We can't stop it, you know? But he just said they got three feet on the edge of the road to bike this. Well, that leaves car eight, nine? Everything's like this, and the bike's got nowhere to go, or somebody's come. You know, it's, we're not built for this. We have to go at it a whole lot different.
Oh, I understand.
There's nothing, you know, they talk about Bentonville and Rogers and wherever. They got streets, they got curbs, they got cutters, you can park cars on the side of the road. They got room for it. There ain't no room here. And the more people you get, they're driving faster and faster regardless of what anybody says, and doing wild and crazy things. And, you know, you come behind the bike, and the guy does one of these numbers, but you can't see fifty feet in front of him. You know, it's, it's just, we're gonna get it. We're gonna get there, but we're trying to put something in that we weren't made for in the first place.
We're doing so, you can go to Colorado, you know, you go around all out there. It's a culture thing.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we're on the very, very far end of it here, but eventually, it will become part of the culture, and everybody will know how to manage it, and everybody.
I'm not saying that some accidents still won't happen, but it it will improve over time, you know?
And that's the idea. Like the Vision Zero, I think the year, year ago is like twenty-forty, you know? I mean, so far in the future, by the time they think all of this should be fully implemented, so this is.
Twenty thirty-eight.
Yeah, twenty thirty-eight. So this is a, you know, a baby step toward that. But to to Jerry's point, educating people, yes, educating the cyclists. Don't wave people around if they can't see, because then they're putting pressure on the driver. Do I make my move? Should I wait? How should we do this? Uh, maybe it's better if the cyclist in that situation pulls off onto a side street that they come to, or any number of other things.
That's the problem. We don't have side streets all over, nor do we have shoulders for them.
We don't, and sometimes, you know what? Sometimes you have to slow down.
We don't get it either.
And wait, wait a second, you know, wait a minute, and I know it's an inconvenience.
It's coming. We're just gonna have to live with it and adapt to it, that's all. But if you, another.